Thank you very much, Lisa. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining us at this regular meeting of the Madera City Council. Today is Wednesday, October 7th. The time is 6:00 PM, and this meeting will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order, which suspends certain requirements of the Ralph M. Brown Act. The city council meeting will be livestreamed on the city's website. Members of the public may participate in the meeting remotely through the electronic meeting via phone by dialing 669-900-6833, and please enter ID number 943-3571-2582, pound, followed by star nine on your phone if you wish to speak. With that, Alicia, if you could please call roll.
Mayor Madellin.
Here.
Mayor Protem Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Gallegos.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Montes.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Holly.
Where is it?
Fantastic. All accounted for. Thank you, Alicia. We will move into the invocation led by Councilman Holly. If you're able to stand, please do so, and then we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilwoman Gallegos will lead us in that. Councilman Holly, if you would, please.
Thank you. May we all bow our heads. Most Lord, God's gracious Father, we thank you again for allowing us to come together, even by Zoom, by presence, by whatever means that allow us to speak. Father, we thank you for our council. We thank you for our city. We thank you for our city team. We thank you for those who are online or on Zoom or by phone, however. But God, we want to give you the thanks and give you the praise. We know that we're facing an epidemic that no one has never seen before and has all the answers yet. But Lord, you have the answer. You have the knowledge. You have the tools. Use us, Heavenly Father, in a way that we've not been used before. We have brought so many folks together, Heavenly Father, and we thank you for that. Although there are so many separated, Lord, but that's for the reasons. And we thank you for our families, those that are at home with us every day that we didn't get to see before. Now we're there with them. We give you glory. We give you praise. And as we move forward into our city business, Heavenly Father, we want to give you thanks to allow us and this team and this city to work together to do the will that you would have us to do. In Christ Jesus' name we say, amen.
Amen. Thank you much, Mr. Councilman. Councilman Gallegos.
Oh, wait for Joseph? All right. Ready? Salute. I pledge allegiance to the Father.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic of what stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. CCU is on mute.
I know, Councilman Holly, but if we both talk, it goes back and forth, and it breaks up, and only one person can talk to the camera. It's kind of crazy.
Yes, thank you very much for that. Thank you, Mr. Councilman, and Councilwoman Gallegos for leading us in the pledge. We will move on to the approval of the agenda. I'll ask my colleagues if there's any changes, additions to this evening's agenda. See none. I'll entertain a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
Motion of the agenda is presented, Mr. Mayor.
It's been moved by Councilman Rodriguez and seconded by Councilman Robinson to approve this evening's agenda as written. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for that. We'll move into public comment. The first fifteen minutes of the meeting, which are reserved for members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked, but are not required, to identify themselves and state the subject of their comment. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option of asking the speaker to hold that comment until the item is called. Comments on items listed as a public hearing on the agenda should be held until the hearing is opened. The council is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusion should be drawn if the council does not respond to public comment at the time. I'll ask our city clerk if we have received any public comment via email.
Mayor, we've received two, two public comments. The first one is from Jean Lang. And it says, Honorable City Council Elected Officials, my name is Jean Lang. I'm writing this to express my strong opposition to Proposition 16. Proposition 16 uses race to judge the qualifications of applicants to universities and jobs, et cetera. This is a textbook definition of racism, pure and simple. If it is passed, how far will we slide down the slippery danger slope? What's next? Set racial quota for elected positions? Set racial quota for NBA and NFL? Set racial quota for TV anchors? Set racial quota for movies and songs? Please join us to vote no against Proposition 16. And that is from Jean Lang. The second one is from Melinda Huzazy. I'm a concerned resident, and I'd like to express my feeling about State Measure 16 and urge anyone who discussed racial discrimination to vote against it on November 3rd. State Measure 16 is against the law and is legalizing discrimination. Please help to stop discrimination of any race in our community and in our state. I believe we should treat everyone equally. Give them the opportunity to become successful in this great state. Vote no on State Measure 16.
Great. Thank you, Alicia, for reading those under public comment. I do not see any attendees wishing to speak. But if there is no further public comment, I will close the public comment portion of the meeting and move into our presentations. First, we have with us from the Madera County Health Department, Dr. Paul. Thank you so much, Dr. Paul, for joining us every, for the last few months or so, every regular council meeting, we've gotten an update from the Health Department that's been very informative. Ms. Boss is on a well-deserved vacation, I understand, so you'll be filling in this evening. So thank you, Dr. Paul. Thank you for joining us.
Yeah, like, thank you, Mayor, and council members for your time, and members of the public that may be listening in. And I thought I'd go over quickly where we're at in the county of Madera, city of Madera with the COVID epidemic, and then how that relates to the tiers and reopening, which is a pretty complicated system. There's been a lot of questions about. So as far as the reality of where things are at, clearly, things are markedly improved, incredibly improved, from the end of July, beginning of August, when our cases really went through the roof, right? That was when there's the National Guard and Air Force helping out in our regional hospitals. We were seeing seventy to a hundred cases a day coming in the door at the Health Department. So now we're seeing, you know, five or ten cases a day. The hospital capacity is fine. We had the lowest number of cases in the hospital in these last few days that we've seen. So that all looks good. And we've also learned other things as well. We haven't, you know, met the tiers for reopening, but we also have figured out in the meantime how to run other businesses. For example, barber shops remain open, salons are open, retail is open at a low level, because we figured out over these last few months how to do some things safely. And that's why there's been a big push to reopen things that are outdoors, because we know that's much more safe than indoors. And the other things that, to me, are very promising, the last week or two, we've also had several elementary schools, I think we're up to seven or eight now, that have applied for waivers and are either opening or just planning to reopen, having had their waivers approved. So that's a huge amount of progress from where we were at the beginning of July. The number of cases, like I said, five to ten a day is, was coming down steadily and seems to have leveled off a bit there in the last week. But in the last couple of days, it's looked encouraging, has continued to drop down again a bit. So it's great things have improved, but why did they improve? It's not like everybody caught COVID, and now we're all immune. And I think what's happened, what we see happening is when things get bad, people hear all about it in the news. Maybe they know somebody who's sick, a relative was sick. People start to get really cautious and be really careful about protecting themselves, their family. And then cases come down a lot, and a month or so later, people get sick of being sort of too locked down, and people think, well, maybe it's passed by, and they start loosening up precautions a lot, and then the cases start to go, it's kind of like this yo-yo effect. And I think where I'm getting to is people, we all need to figure out a way to sort of manage this sustainably, so we don't alternate between completely locked down and never seeing anybody, and then going out and acting like it's not, not sort of a problem. You know what I mean? People need to figure out how to visit their relatives, maybe not everybody in the family going over, sitting outside with one or two of you, and wearing masks as opposed to your brother's family, your family, everybody coming over, and it's sort of, sort of falling apart with the distancing and what you'd planned to do when you went over there initially. So the cases have come down a lot. What are we doing to try and get them down further? And we rely a lot in our case investigations, where are these cases coming from? And a month or so ago, we were getting a lot of cases from work, related agricultural work, not necessarily at work. A lot of it was related to carpooling, transportation. But in the last few weeks, the numbers have declined, so we don't have so many cases to think about. But really, what we've been hearing about is a lot of just sort of within large households, family gatherings, sort of transmissions from there. And that's a pattern we've seen in Madera throughout this. It'll start out with maybe a case at work, and then, you know, a few people in the family get it, and if people are moving around a lot, that can head over to other families. So a lot of it really has been household-to-household transmission. We aren't seeing it all related to one business activity sector or anything like that. So, so again, like what I was saying is people need to, you know, like I said, people are very frustrated with things reopening slowly, at least a lot of people are, not everyone perhaps. And I think if there's one plus to reopening a bit more slowly is it'll sort of make us realize how to make this more sustainable, our mitigation efforts and prevention, right? Because I think what may happen in other counties is they sort of zoom to a much improved case count, they're reopening, and quickly, they're going to zoom back into the tier where things shut down again, because people stop being cautious. So I think if we have a couple of weeks to see that happening elsewhere, perhaps, and to sort of get our own mitigation efforts more into place, I think when things do start to reopen more, when we move from the purple tier into the red tier, we'll be much more likely to stay there and have a sort of sustained decrease in cases, is what I'm hoping for. So it's been frustrating, but what I'm saying, hoping, is that sort of gives us a chance to get more prevention measures in place. And then, as far as the tier system and where we're at with the actual numbers, there's basically only two things to get measured. How many tests are we doing, and how many come back positive? And from those two numbers, this very complicated tier system is built with adjustment factors, and it's divided up into a whole lot of different things, but it really is based on those two measurements. And for those two measurements, we're doing very well with the numbers of tests and the percent positivity rate. Both of those numbers would get us, make us able to move from the purple tier one into tier two, which is where you can start reopening more indoor activities. You have to be below a percent, eight percent of tests coming back positive, and we're around six. And the other new metric, which got a lot of publicity, was the equity measure, where they wanted to make sure that the lowest sort of socioeconomic quartile in your county was doing as well at meeting that metric as the rest of the county. And actually, our lowest quartile meets, is at the same level as the county average, about 6.6, well below eight percent. So we meet that metric right now quite well. And it's interesting, because we have always focused on areas where COVID is, which overlaps with that area, because COVID has hit that area, lower socioeconomic areas more than other areas. The first equity measure they came out with was just testing rate, and we did, we were one of the highest counties in the state. We were testing almost twice the rate in areas of our lowest quartile of socioeconomic level than on our highest level, which was better than almost any other county. But because COVID was so concentrated in those areas, we needed an even higher rate of testing than that to bring that percentage down. But anyways, we meet that metric now. That's not what's holding us up. The thing that's holding us up is just the number of cases. We're at about eight to nine, and we need to be below seven. So where we are in the last day or two, you might have seen the numbers, it was like seven cases yesterday and two today, three or four cases, that's fine. We need to be below about twelve, but the week before, we had a few days, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. And I really don't know when the numbers come out on Tuesday, if that will be adequate to move into the red, or if we'll be stuck in purple for one or one more week. So if it was good, next Tuesday is the day they check. It has to be good for two weeks before you could open things up. So the very soonest would be two weeks from next Tuesday, when we could possibly move into the red. If we're still stuck in the purple next week, it would be three weeks. But I think with the numbers we're seeing in the last few days, in that timeframe, things will be reopening. Schools are on a slightly different schedule. Elementary schools can open now if they send in a waiver plan. For other schools, higher-grade schools, we have to have been in the next tier for at least two weeks, so that's four or five weeks from now at the very minimum before middle schools and high schools can start to reopen. But honestly, it's so challenging just reopening the elementary schools. That's actually quite a big undertaking, that I don't think there are a lot of schools wanting to reopen everything from day one at this point. So I think if we can start reopening elementary schools and do that successfully now, by the time we get around to being able to open junior highs and high schools, we'll be about as soon as school districts feel ready to do that, though that's, you know, their issue, not mine necessarily. So as far as other things we're doing to try and get our numbers down, we've done a lot of, when the cases went down, there's a big decrease in the testing numbers, and we've done a lot of public education about getting people to continue to test, sort of moving more into surveillance tests. So the idea is you don't only test if you're sick, but if you've been out and about a lot, if you might have been around a big gathering, where there could have been somebody with COVID, even if you're not having symptoms, we want people to test, and we want people from all parts of the county to be testing. Basically, the idea is we don't want to be missing areas where there could be cases of COVID that we're missing. And if there aren't cases of COVID, we want to be able to document that by saying, we're testing all over the place, we're not seeing much. But with all the messaging about testing and the importance of that, we don't want to lose track of the more important message, which is, we don't want you to get COVID, which is the distancing, the mask, it's not anything new, but it's just, I think what's new is trying to find ways to sort of go back to your life and still maintain that. You know, like, schools are starting to do outdoor conditioning with the distancing and, and, you know, not sharing equipment. That's not where you want to be, but at least you're doing something, you're not just sitting at home. So in all kind of areas, how much can we do and still sort of maintain those factors and sort of do more than we're doing when things were really shut down? Other stuff we're doing, one of the most exciting things, I think, coming up is working in our agricultural area with Central Valley Opportunity. I almost forget what the last C stands for, council. They do a lot with outreach and education for field workers, agricultural workers. And in addition to that, they're going to be distributing PPE, that's already started. And they're also going to help out doing contact, case investigations and contact tracings, and getting people who don't have resources to isolate into isolation, whether it's they just need supplies, or whether it's any wage replacement, or whether they need, you know, actually be put in a hotel room. Coordinating all those services, which exist, is incredibly complicated. So they can coordinate that, and the idea is if they're out there and the people working in those places know these people, they're much more likely to take advantage of those services. So again, a month ago, that was a lot of our cases. Clearly, it's some cases now, and anything we can do to bring those down will be a big plus. So we're also doing a lot of outreach, both in English and Spanish. I was on Radio Bilingue, Univision, and Despereaux de Valier this morning. Just making sure everybody knows that the fairground site is underutilized, you can get in there the same day. Test results come back quickly in like two days. It's really not how testing was a couple of months ago. I guess other stuff going on in the background is, that hasn't happened yet, but we have a lot of support from the state to get our Health Department laboratory up for high-volume testing for COVID. And working with the state, we think we can actually get that running much more soon, much more quickly than we had originally thought. So maybe in three or four weeks, we may be able to start doing a lot of testing onsite here. And that may be a big help is demand for testing in schools increases. If they start suggesting screening much more frequently, originally, they suggested every two months, and they're reconsidering that. If teachers need testing more frequently, having access to testing in Madera will be a big plus. And in the background, the state is also ramping up a huge testing site and trying to think of ways to get specimens to there quickly, and they will run tests pretty cheaply. So those may be big, make a big difference for things like reopening of schools safely. So that's kind of my summary. Like I said, things are much better than they were. We really need to figure out how to stabilize them and get them somewhat better and keep them that way, so things stay that way and don't bounce back up into a second spike in cases. And we're hoping to reopen soon, but it really looks like we're two to three weeks away from getting into the red at the least. But we're keeping our fingers crossed. The case numbers today were great, so we're hoping it stays that way. And I think those are the main issues I wanted to cover, and I'm happy if there's any questions over any of these topics.
Great. Thank you very much, Dr. Paul. Mayor Protem Garcia has a question.
Good evening. Thank you very much for that update. I had a question, because you mentioned the testing is much more efficient and quicker. What type of testing are you doing? Are you still doing the nasal, the swab, or are you doing something different?
Yeah, so when we say testing, pretty much always people are referring to PCR testing unless they say they're talking about some other kind of testing. So I kind of do that by default. So the tests at OptumServe and the tests that we do in the Health Department are right now all of the sort of standard, gold standard PCR tests for COVID. The actual specimen collection, yes, it's still a nasal specimen. For the, our mobile clinics, we do it self-collecting, so you do it yourself, and it's not the sticking it all the way back into your throat. It's just kind of the front part of your nose, so it's much easier than it was. And so it's not uncomfortable, and like I said, it's quick to get in, and the results come around pretty quickly. But the other part of your question is actually really important, because there are sort of point-of-care, what are called antigen tests, and there's millions of those that are going to be distributed through the state, and they're still trying to figure out how and to who. But basically, it's going to go to all counties, probably more or less based on population. And those tests are a bit more complicated to explain how to use them, but they can be incredibly helpful. Basically, they're very helpful for symptomatic patients. They're not so helpful necessarily for catching people before they get symptoms and things like that. But for example, if you're working with field workers, if you can tell somebody right there, if their test is positive, then you can get them in isolation and take care of things right away. Whereas if you're trying to track them down two days later, having isolated them at home for a day or two, you can imagine that's much more complicated, and it's easy to lose track of people. And the same thing in schools. If you have a kid show up with symptoms, and you can show in twenty minutes that they're COVID-positive and need to go home, you can get people quarantined before it becomes a big deal. Whereas if two or three days go on without knowing, it can be, like I said, it's just much harder to sort of stop things quickly. So there are a lot of other tests coming out, and integrating those into our current system is going to be kind of tricky, but it's all for the good, because if they're used correctly, they definitely can help with getting people results quickly and knowing what's going on.
Thank you for that answer. Next, we have Councilman Robinson, and then Councilwoman Gallegos. You're on mute, Mr. Councilman.
Hello, Dr. Paul. Yes, I've been hearing that the virus, the COVID virus, can float in the air for hours, you know, like a mist, and, and they get it all in your eyes, especially, especially inside, you know, you know, buildings. My, my second question is, if you can't contain it by, you can't contain the city, because people travel everywhere, and somebody from Bay Area or LA can come into Madera and spread it out, you know, among family members or whatever, stopping at the store. Because we got, we have 99 going right through Madera. So it's almost impossible to try to contain it. And we're at a major intersection. You know, we say, which is, you know, it's going to be really hard to try to keep our COVID cases down. Thank you.
Yeah, they're both important points, and even counties that might be able to sort of geographically isolate themselves have had a hard time doing it, because people go there to isolate from the Bay Area, right? Their second home is there, and they think they'll be safer. So it is very hard for long-term to keep one area really separate from what's going on in the rest of the state. So if, and I think that's partly what happened, when cases went through the roof in Fresno, it was just a matter of time before cases started to appear here, right? And that's sort of why we're behind Fresno, is because it peaked here after it peaked there. So it is difficult to separate our county from what's going on in the rest of the state, for exactly the reasons you said. It's a big transportation area, right? On the other hand, the issue of airborne transmission is clear. The virus is mostly spread that way. In the beginning, people were extremely worried about surfaces and washing their packages. And basically, how we know is partly from studying, you know, viruses in the lab, but a lot of it's just from seeing where infections come from. And we're not seeing, everybody's getting it from their packages and things that they're touching. We are seeing that it's spreading when people are in rooms, you know, that's the choir when everybody got it. But on the other hand, we're not seeing things like measles, and measles, like what you said, can really hang in the air for a long time. And if one person walks through a building, you know, half the building gets measles, right? And we do not see that with COVID, so it's clearly important to wear masks, and the more air turnover and being outdoors is great. But on the other hand, we also know that even if we can isolate it from the air, you know, after it's been floating around for an hour or two, the clinical data, who's getting infected, shows it's not as infectious as something airborne like measles. So it's kind of a gradient. It's not as, doesn't drop out of the air as fast as people thought initially. It floats in the air for a while. It can get in people's eyes. But that's really if you're in close proximity to somebody. So it's not, we're not seeing people walked into a room an hour after somebody else was in the room, and they're catching it. So it's clearly is mostly being transmitted by people sneezing, coughing into the air, which we didn't know at first. And that's part of the reason why the guidelines changed, and that's why we're so big on masks and things now, when we're sort of more dubious about them, when we thought it might be more from touching stuff and touching your face. So what we know has changed. It is airborne, but it is not as airborne as some things. And, you know, in restaurants, they've seen it. There's this big study in China where people who are downwind from the air conditioner in that row of tables all got it. But the other people in the restaurant didn't get it, right? So you had to be sort of some air connection with them, not just in the same room with somebody.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gallegos.
Dr. Paul, there's been a lot of changes because of the tiers that came out, and our surrounding counties have other things happening. So I've been getting several emails from residents and businesses that are asking that we're still under the impression that no more than ten should get together unless it's within a family. So if there was a meeting of more than ten individuals and their masks and six feet of social distancing, that would be okay if they're indoors?
I think gatherings, they try to limit it. Is it better if they're outdoors, and if they're indoors, we try to limit them at ten?
Okay. So if they're outdoors, what's the amount of people you can have at an event outdoors? And, and the capacity, we talked about a 25% capacity. Is that what we're telling?
Yeah, I think that's the correct answer. I've had so many numbers through my head. I always check, and usually I check with Stephanie. But I believe it's 20%, 25% of the capacity of the place, and some places outdoors are large. And for a while, it was a maximum number of like 100 or 200, but I don't know if that still exists. But the idea is 25% capacity if you're outdoors.
And so if they're outdoors, they're still, we're still requiring them to have masks and use a six-feet social distancing?
Yeah. If you're out, yes.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And just to clarify, Dr. Paul, it is seven positive cases per 100,000 people in the county.
Yeah.
So if there is 165,000 people in the county, would that then be 11.4?
Approximately, yeah. It's around 12 or 13.
Okay, so that's what he mentioned. Okay, so, and so, and we need to maintain that average, not, not if we get 18 in a day or more, or 50. We need to maintain that average for 14 days.
Yeah, they look over, they do a seven-day average, and this is where it all starts to go downhill. For the seven-day lag, based on the episode date, which is the days people's symptoms started. And the only reason I mention it is because if you just take the number of cases we report every day, add it up over seven days and divide it by seven or whatever, you will get a different number than what the state produces, and it's off by like one or two cases. And it's horribly complicated to explain why they are close. They sort of match up, but the state uses this different date for when they, what day they assign the cases to. And personally, I find it really frustrating because it's very hard to reproduce that and it would be nice to do that more easily. So a lot of times when I do the numbers, just, oh, how many cases do we have in last week? I'll get a number like 11 and the state will come out and say it's nine. I'm like, oh, that's good. I'm not going to say anything. But it's because they're assigning the cases to different days. And in the end, it averages out, but it's very frustrating because some people pay close attention to the numbers. And they're like, I'm getting this and they're getting that, but, but they, they are close. But yeah, that's the idea. They look at a seven-day average.
And, and I, I share the frustration with our community as Councilwoman Gallego said, because you know, lives are affected and businesses are affected and it, it's one thing to have to adapt to COVID, especially if you're a small business owner. It's the, it's the, it's the goal line that keeps moving. It's trying to figure out a number system and a color-coded system. And when you say they, you mean the state. And, and as elected officials, you can understand the seven of us here and also the, the board supervisors as well. We're the closest thing to our community for some sort of outreach, whether it's in frustration or for answers. And we turn to the health department and the health department turns to the state. And in, you're telling us as a professional, that is confusing to you. So we share the frustration of our community. We want to do what's best and really the, the one, the one simple answer is just get our numbers down. If, if we can do everything possible to not gather, to wear a mask, to social distance, to watch our hands and get the numbers where it's hands down, it's not a guesstimate or it, it is hands down, Madera County's numbers are, are now at the level where we can start to open. And then the big key at that point, as you had mentioned in the beginning of, of your, your information, is, it's not opening by staying open and sustaining those numbers. So I, I, it's not so much the question, although I'd like you to, to, to kind of answer it. The frustration with our, with our community, our, our business community, our, 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 our small business community and those people that have no idea. If, if there was a goal line and there was a number and there was a date, I think, I think they can have some hope. Right now, rightfully so, they're starting to lose hope.
Yeah, and I agree. And I think actually it's a, the, pointing out the fact that I refer to them as they and not we kind of sums up how, how frustrating it is for us as well because, and that's also why in my summary, I'm like, first, let me just talk about what's going on and then let me get to the tier system and this huge complicated edifice they have built on what is basically two numbers. How many tests are you doing and how many people are coming down with this infection? And every time they fine tune things, I mean, in their defense, they're trying to deal with incredibly divergent counties and have some kind of system that works for a county of 30,000 people and works for Los Angeles County as well. So that's kind of a mess, but one of the biggest issues with the equity measure was not that anybody, everybody thinks it's great. We should be working on equity. But the system is so complicated already and people are frustrated and they want to know what is the number and when can we reopen? And adding something new, even if they said they were going to add something new a month ago, just really throws everybody off. And even on the question I was asked before, is it handle how many people outdoors? I can't even keep those things straight because it depends on the sector and a million other things. And I basically look it up every time. And if it's hard for me to keep it straight, yeah, I get the numbers pretty well, but all of the rules and you know, I get asked about percussion instruments outdoors and I wade through the guidance is incredibly complicated. And I think what you said is also important. Under all of those guidances, they basically all come down to the same thing, which is wear your mask, try and stay outdoors or where there's good air turnover and try and keep some distance between you and somebody else. And it's the same thing over and over again in every setting. So like the, how many people can be outdoors is the number 100 to 200. Well, the reality is if you wear a mask and you stay six feet apart and you're outdoors, you're probably pretty safe. But you gotta check, you know, what if there's live music? Is it then not allowed, right? There's this million other things that we have to check because that's, you know, actually the law from the state and we don't want people to get in trouble. So we always double check it. But underneath it, it's like, yeah, this is what people need to do to stay safe. And it needs to be presented in a way that doesn't make them feel frustrated, like they're being told something different every month. And these numbers are just coming out of nowhere. So that's why to me the message is, yeah, the mask outdoors and keep your distance. And our cases need to come down. The other thing that frustrates me with all these numbers and percent testing is people start focusing so much on testing. And like the reality is we need the cases to go down, right? And we should be focusing on that. And we can do all the testing we want, but if people, you know, get fed up and quit wearing masks and say, I can't keep staying locked down because the rules are so confusing, then our cases are going to stay up and we're not getting where we want to be. So the other piece um, that is frustrating is what you mentioned about businesses. Because if they do need to be shut down, they need to have some kind of support. And I think they've had a huge amount of trouble getting any kind of support to stay in business. And I think this next month and the, I mean, when we've called up businesses as, you know, places to do a testing site, they're like, yeah. And if we don't open up in another month, it's not even going to be my site anymore because I'm done. And that's just really hard to hear. And it's very hard, like I said, if they need support that doesn't exist. So it's even harder if it's sort of, well, you got lumped in with this group. You know, we're hearing that very much from areas of the county that have very low rates. You know, if you made a map based on where COVID is, you wouldn't draw the county boundaries that we have, right? There's areas of the county that have very low rates and they're really more like Mariposa than they are like Fresno, right? And some of those businesses are suffering a lot and they're in an area where it probably would be safe to reopen. And there's no real rational reason that they are not. So all of those things lead to a huge amount of frustration on the part of the public and, and I don't know how many times I've heard, we go to whatever store it is, big box store, and that looks way less safe than what I want to do with my business and there's no way I can reopen. And, and yes, it's frustrating.
Thank you, Dr. Paul, very much for being here and again for the insightful information for our community and for us. I'll ask my colleagues or staff, are there any other questions for Dr. Paul before he, before? Again, Dr. Paul, thank you very much for you and please show our appreciation to the team at the health department. We know they're working diligently to do everything they can to help us get through this pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
You're welcome. Uh, moving on to the next presentation, this is a proclamation recognizing the disability awareness month. As everyone is aware, I'm sure the Americans with Disability Act or the ADA is just so vital and so important to our community, regardless of one's ability. Uh, we want to ensure that they have equal access to jobs, uh, to, to parks and venues and buildings and everything else. To make sure that, uh, that, that they are treated equal and fairly. And the month, month of October is the Disability Awareness Month. Um, and so I'd like to present a proclamation that says whereas the month of October has been dedicated nationally to highlight the abilities and contributions of Americans with disabilities. And whereas we are strengthened as a society by striving to ensure that everyone, regardless of ability, has equal access to employment, education, recreation, cultural activities and community life. And whereas people of all abilities have vastly diverse talents and skills to contribute to our economy. And whereas the city of Madera is committed to ensuring that every person it serves enjoys equal opportunity to participate and benefit from its programs and services. Now therefore, let it be resolved that I am Mayor Andrew Madeline, Mayor of the City of Madera, do hereby recognize October to be the Disability Awareness Month, signed on the 7th of October. And we have with us this evening the, the chairperson of our ADA commission, Ms. DJ Becker, who I can tell you firsthand that she is committed to her position in making sure of the equality for everyone in this community. Thank you, Ms. Becker, for joining us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for acknowledgement. The Madera ADA Advisory Council really appreciates the support of the city and the city council over these last 10 or 12 years. We've been able to make a real difference in people's lives and we continue to hear suggestions and comments and that appreciation from the community. Um, I'd also like to thank Wendy and Diana for their above and beyond efforts to research and provide tips and guidelines and, and educational materials. We are looking forward to continuing our work and to make Madera a more accessible, barrier-free city for everyone. So thank you again.
You're welcome. Ms. Becker, thank you for joining us. Any comments or questions? Thank you, everyone. Uh, moving on to uh, the next presentation, this is the Small Business Pandemic Grant Program. Uh, we have with us this evening, Mr. Bobby Kahn from the EDC.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, didn't mean to get. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm just going to give you a brief update on the pandemic grant program that we're running and I'm going to attempt to share my screen. Oops, let me. Okay. Everybody sees that okay?
Yes, Bobby, thanks.
Okay, thank you. I know last time I had some difficulties, so I'm, I'm good at participating as well, but all the share, uh, share screen stuff as I'm still kind of a rookie. So um, again, just wanted to give you an update. Uh, what we've done, as you know, is we've partnered with the county of Madera for a pandemic grant program in uh, throughout the county. And this, and this differs from the revolving loan fund where it is truly countywide. That includes both the cities and the county. Uh, what I want to just go over tonight is just the general guidelines of the grant, what has changed over the last couple of weeks, the required documents, the grant amounts, and then if you had any questions. So the first thing that I wanted to just touch on was that the general guidelines, you have to be a for-profit business located in Madera County, which as I said, includes the city of Madera, then the city of Chowchilla and all other unincorporated areas. Nonprofits can be or may be eligible. You have to demonstrate a revenue loss like a chamber of commerce from loss of events. The loss of government funding cannot be considered if, as part of the funding losses. Uh, you can only have one grant per entity and you have to have 50 employees or less to qualify. One question too, that I want to touch on, self-employed business owners are eligible. Even if you're the only employee, we've had a lot of people say, well, I didn't apply because I'm just, you know, a business by myself. You can still qualify if you're a, a legal business. The, we've made some major changes in what we're calling round two. The first, uh, the first change we made is the Paycheck Protection Program, commonly referred to as PPP. In the round, the first round, you were not eligible if you received PPP money. Now you are eligible. You have to show us verification of the amount received and when it was received and a written statement explaining that the funding was not sufficient to offset the losses, which has been common with a lot of our businesses. Also, if you received the idle or the economic injury disaster loan, those businesses are now eligible as well with the same stipulations of you have to provide the amount received, when it received, and the written statement. The required documents, uh, you need of course, a completed application. You can get those online or we'll provide you with another website, but you can get them on our website. It props up right on our main page and it is available in English and in Spanish. Uh, you do need some verification documents. You have to have a current business license in the jurisdiction you're operating. And you have to have it completed and signed W9. Some people have not kept their businesses license, business license current. So if you do apply and you show us a receipt where you have paid for it to update and bring your business license current, we will accept that. The OR category, there's two actual OR categories. The first one is we will also need one year of business federal tax return. Or if you don't want to provide that, you can provide a business license reflecting a date prior to March 15th, 2019, or a fictitious business name statement filed prior to March 15th, 2019. As part of this, the reason why we're asking for that is because the business has to be in, in, you have to be in business for one year in order to qualify for the grant. Additional documents that you will need is a profit and loss statement covering July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020. Or you can provide us a detailed written statement of how the business was negatively impacted by COVID-19. And many of our small businesses are doing that because there, a lot of them just aren't sophisticated enough to have complicated profit and loss statements available to them. Just going back to, I, I went quickly over the W9. Just wanted to make sure it's clear that this is a grant. You don't have to pay it back, but it is taxable income. So you, it will be reported to the IRS and you do need to report it on your, on your tax returns for 2020. The grant amounts is pretty simple. Um, one to 20 employees, you qualify for 5,000. 21 to 50, 10,000. I had been lobbying to lower that number, but I haven't been able to get much traction on that. So uh, the county's kept it at those numbers. Uh, and then I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Great, Bobby. Thank you very much. As we just talked to Dr. Paul, as you heard, it's been very difficult for a lot of our small businesses. So um, there's only so much money. Can you tell us how the application process has been going so far?
Thank you for bringing that up. Uh, the application process in our first round was very vigorous, but we received about 150 applications. The process got slowed down substantially because we, we worked together with the county staff to push this out real, real fast to get the application started. The problem that we came across was we did not include the auditor's office. And so the auditor's office had a lot of concerns after the, after we'd processed them and they started looking through them. So we had to have a major powwow. So that's what came up with the round two. Making it easier to qualify. We're trying to make it as easy as possible. But going back to your question about the amount of money, we pushed out about 600 to $650,000 in round one. But that still leaves us with over callous and we will help them qualify.
And to your point, you were talking about the application process and, and I like how you mentioned there's four different pieces of the puzzle, but it's not all four. It's either or, one or the other or the other. So you're, 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 you're helping as best as you can to fill out this information to get this second round. So by saying a second round, if a business already received the PPP, they can, they're eligible for this second round, correct?
They are.
Okay. And so the original paperwork that they showed, uh, it seemed simply to show that it just wasn't enough, what you were saying, that there, there, it was, they're still negatively impacted.
Correct. And what we've found is two things. One, like you said, they receive PPP money and it just hasn't been sufficient to keep them going. They've already blown through it. I mean, look how long they've been closed. Some of these businesses have been closed down since March. And then the other thing is on the idle loans, a lot of them applied for idle, uh, an idle loan. They turned in their application and they, the government sent them the original, the, excuse me, the initial $1,000, but then did not approve the loan. So they got to keep the $1,000. But what that did in our first round, it disqualified them from, from ours. And we had a lot of people saying, hey, I only got a thousand dollars. So, so that's one of the reasons we really wanted to open it up.
Great, great. Thank you.
We do have Spanish available for people that, that cannot speak Spanish. We have somebody over the county that we will have call or interpret. Like I said, we have English and Spanish applications. So we want to encourage everybody to apply.
That's great. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Gallegos has a question and then Councilman Rodriguez.
Um, Bobby, how are we getting that information out to the businesses? Are we sending it to every business or just word of mouth? Or are we putting it in the paper? How are they getting that information? Because I haven't seen other than emails that come to us as council.
Right. We've been doing press releases. We've been working with the chambers of commerce. They've all been very cooperative and blasting it out to all their members. In eastern Madera County, the AmeriCorps volunteers actually went door to door. In eastern Madera County, the AmeriCorps volunteers actually went door-to-door with the businesses. We have had several bookkeeping services that we've distributed the flyers to, so that they do the bookkeeping for a lot of these small businesses, so they've been passing it out. We've, you know, we were, Channel 24 covered it. We've pushed it out as much as we can, but we're always open to suggestions. So, if you see something that you think we're missing, give us a holler, because, you know, we want people to know about this. I spoke at the Rotary Club in Oakhurst via Zoom today to try to keep getting the word out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Dillon. So, Bobby, two of the questions I think were answered. One was, was it in Spanish? And I think you answered that question with the county. And the other question, Councilwoman Gallegos asked, as far as what kind of outreach we're doing. But I think more specifically, I was interested in how we're outreaching these smaller businesses downtown Madera, a lot of them that speak Spanish. I think I had asked you this before, if there was some type of newsletter or some type of video or something that these folks can also take advantage of, because I feel that there's quite a bit of activity downtown, and I'm sure that with some outreach, I'm sure you'd have a lot of businesses down there can take advantage of these grant programs.
Yes, and I appreciate the offer you made to do a video in Spanish for us, and that hasn't gone unnoticed or hasn't been forgotten. I talked to Julie about it, and then unfortunately, she, the smoky air, she contracted a lung infection from the heavy smoke in the air, so she was out of work for a while, and now she's trying to get caught up. So, expect a phone call from us, and we will be reaching out to you to do that.
Yeah, and if not me, Bobby, it's okay. I'm just saying, you know, making sure that, you know, there's outreach, not necessarily in the Spanish community, but, you know, out there in our community to make sure that these grants are available. I've run across a few folks, and I've kind of headed them out your way, and thank you for reaching out and getting those links to the applications. But I still feel that there is a lot more that we can do, and certainly video newsletters and what have you would certainly help a lot of these folks that are struggling.
Yeah, we're happy, you know, we're trying to get the word out. We have the same feeling as you do. We want to get this money out. Our small business people in the city of Madera and the city of Chauchoa and the county are really suffering. It's been, it's been real eye-opening for me, because I've actually gone out and talked to some of these and hand-carried some applications out to people, and, I mean, people are literally breaking down and crying. We've had people crying in our office about, you know, how they're losing their business, they can't keep hanging on, you know, when's this going to end, and so forth. You know, we're talking, you know, really, when you look at $5,000, it's not that significant amount of money, but to these people, you think they're giving them a million dollars, they're just so desperate.
Thank you, Bobby.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. Mayor Potem Garcia.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bobby, you mentioned the fact that 600, roughly $650,000 has been awarded so far? And what was the start date on that?
We started, the first round was started, I'm going to just kind of guess at the date, somewhere around August the 3rd, 4th, somewhere in there. I don't know what days of the week it was, but right around, just shortly after the 1st of August.
Okay, all right. I thought it was longer than that. Okay, all right.
Then we also had a, we had a, what I call an artificial deadline. Now, the county's, the auditor's office made us hold it more to a harder deadline, but we were trying to get people excited and about applying and not to wait. So, we put a deadline of August 17. So, we had a big rush for what we call Round One. And then what we found out was the county really wasn't ready on their side either to start inputting all this data into their system to get these people paid. So, it's been a real kind of a pain, if you can, and we've been working back and forth with them, and we're starting to get it really smoothed out finally. And that's why they kind of, you know, I was anxious to get a Round Two started right away, but they kind of put the brakes on us and told us, you know, just wait. So, they finally gave us the go-ahead, I think it was last week, and we pushed it out. We needed to readjust our website, so it took one day to readjust our website, and then we pushed it out the next day.
Yeah, I can appreciate the massive amount of work that you guys have to do on this. As Councilwoman Gallegos, I believe, said, all really we can do is send them over to your offices to get guidance on exactly what they need to do. I've seen the applications, both in English and Spanish, but there's still $3 million sitting in the pot that hasn't been touched or is in the process of being touched. And given the amount of folks who are going out of business, I mean, we got bodies that closed down right there on Main Street, and other businesses are being affected, that, you know, our community is definitely, definitely hurting. Of the businesses in Madera County, how many, would you estimate how many businesses have been granted monies from the program?
Throughout the county, about, right now, that have actually received money, about 150. And then, to be honest with you, I don't know how many applications Lois is processing right now. I didn't ask her how, but she's got, if I turn this, if I turn this laptop around and showed you the conference table, it goes from one end to the other with stacks of applications that she's working on that are in different phases.
Yeah, and like I said, brother, I know that this is a big, big, big task that's being asked of us during this COVID time. Makes our jobs, all of our jobs, a lot harder to do. Do you have capacity to be able to process applications in your office and also do outreach in the communities?
Yes, Lois has been handling all the, she's what we call the program administrator, and you really, it's really best to have one person that, not necessarily that she receives it, but after the application is brought in, she actually goes through it to make sure that everything is there, and she has a check sheet that she checks off, and that she puts that check sheet with the applications now when it goes to the county, so the county can review it quickly, and then the auditor's office can speed things up, because the auditor's office was looking through these applications like they were doing a full business audit, it seemed like. You know, they were just looking at every little detail and then calling and saying, "Well, they just got this and this." So, you know, we finally kind of reached an agreement on that. So, I think we have the capacity. I've been doing most of the outreach when people, if we need, you know, going out to businesses, I've been doing some of that. Julie's been doing some of that, and then Lois has been kind of the in-house person with processing. Then it has to go to the county. They have to review it to make sure that they're good with it. And then the real slowdown, too, is it has to be each one of those applications, each one of those W-9s have to be input into their system so that they can cut the check. They have to make each one of these people a vendor, if you will, of the county, so that the county can send the money to them.
And this is my last question. Does the, does the awarding of the grant monies to your, to the EDC, does that include administrative costs, maybe hiring Spanish-speaking staff or other staff to be able to streamline the applications and send them over to the county?
We, they are reimbursing us for our staff time. There's no additional staff time built into it, but they have, on their side, they have a staff person that is bilingual, that is handling Spanish-speaking when we need assistance. So, the county is, the county is providing one of their employees for Spanish speakers. We don't, we don't have, we don't have that ability here, unfortunately.
Bobby, one last question before we let you go. What would happen to the money if it was not used?
Well, the county is under a deadline, so it's a good point. What I'm thinking is that, you know, at some point in time, I'm going to have to sit down with Jay Barney and say, you know, are we able, are we going to be able to get all this money out the door in a timely manner? If we feel like, if Jay and I come to some kind of an agreement that says, you know, we're probably only going to get the $2 million, what will probably happen, what I, what I think will happen, is they will go back to the Board of Supervisors, and they will redirect it to some other COVID-related activity that they can do under the guidelines of their COVID funds, because these are, this is CAREZAC money, and they pushed a lot of it over into this business assistance, so they would have to readjust to figure out what else they could do with it.
Got it, thank you. If there's anything we as a city can do to help facilitate that, please let us know.
Absolutely, thank you.
Bobby, thank you for being with us this evening and giving us this information. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, and thank you, guys, for all your support on this, and thank you for the support you guys show to our local businesses. It's really important right now. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. Before we move into the consent calendar, we're an hour into the meeting, and we haven't quite got to the consent calendar yet. We have the PIO from Cal Fire that's scheduled for Item E2. After consent, I'd like to move that up. Be cognizant of his time this evening, which he does have a time restraint. So, after consent, if it's okay with council, I'd like to then move into Item E2, the Cal Fire update, and then continue back with the agenda. Is that okay with council? Thank you very much. With that, let's move into the consent calendar. I'll ask my colleagues if there's any item that they wish to pull for any particular Seeing none, I'll call for action on the consent calendar this evening.
Move to approve the consent calendar as presented, Mr. Mayor.
I can't.
Good move by Councilman Rodriguez and seconded by Councilwoman Gallegos to approve the consent calendar as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for that. And thank you, council, for allowing us to move into Item E2. As I mentioned, this is just the update from Cal Fire. I will start, are we going to go right to the PIO, or is Chief Watson, are you going to lead us off? I believe we have Tim with us.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and council, I'd just like to introduce Tim. He's from the Northern Rockies team out of Missoula, Montana, and Tim is a U.S. Forest Service employee, and he has the authority to speak on behalf of the Creek Fire, so I'd just like to let Tim give his update.
Thank you, chief.
Okay, thank you, chief, and Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Appreciate a few minutes just to give you an update on what's going on. As the chief said, my name's Tim. I'm working with the incident management team from the Northern Rockies. We're on the north side of the Creek Fire. We also have California Team Five is on the south side of the Creek Fire, so two incident management teams working with over 1,500 firefighters currently assigned to the fire. Just a quick update, we are at about 328,603 acres in size, 49% containment, a lot of good containment on the western side of the fire, around the southern side and up to the east. So, still the most active fire is more on the northern side, up into the high country and the wilderness, as well as there is still some active fire over towards Florence Lake, Kaiser Pass Road, that the California Team Five is working with. Just to put it in perspective, the size of this fire, it's over 340 miles of fire line around it, so even though we've got a lot of containment, we're continuing to monitor that. Crews are continuing to mop up and make sure that that fire line is cool, and even though it's quite miserable, as you all are aware, to have the smoke as it is, the high-pressure weather system has kind of kept a lid on fire activity and allowed us time to make really good progress, working along those fire lines. So, still a lot more work to be done to continue to secure those lines, but we've got another team coming in on the south, transitioning in for a fresh two weeks. Our team up here, we're going to be here another 10 days. We extended, so working with the forest, still have lots of firefighters in place and aircraft as needed, working towards containment and securing on this fire. And I'll stop there.
Great, thank you so much for that information. We appreciate it. Any questions from council? I think one question maybe is, how do we pronounce your last name, sir?
Okay, it's Ingraham. It looks like engraved, but without the E at the end.
Ingraham.
Yep.
Thank you. And as far as injuries, I mean, this is a fire like no other, but it seems like for our firefighters, injuries have been at a minimum.
Yes, that's correct. We're at 13 or 14 that we would consider minor or moderate injuries. Fortunately, things from, you know, cuts that required stitches to, you know, unfortunately, concussion, but nothing more serious than that. There's, you know, torn calf muscles, things like that. So, fortunately, nothing more serious than that, but, you know, we've, we were up over 2,000 firefighters at one point, so when you have that much going on, you'll have some of that, those activities happen. I will also add, we did, as you probably all are aware, we had a contingent of U.S. Marine Corps soldiers that were working, activated to work wildfire. They had been on the Creek Fire. They rolled down the road today, their mission complete with us here, but to lend some support to some of the fires up to the north in the August complex. But they did a great job, and we really appreciate the work that they did out here.
We do as well, thank you. Mayor Potem Garcia has a question.
Yes, Tim, thank you very much for your service, you and all the staff and folks that were up there fighting these fires. It affected the whole Central Valley, and it still is at this point with the smoke. This is more directed at Chief Watson. Chief, we had asked for this report regarding our staff that had been up there in the fire, fighting the fires from not only our city staff, but county staff that were up there helping evacuate and stuff. And I would just kind of see what kind of numbers we have of our folks going up and either fighting the fire directly or providing some kind of assistance with evacuations and everything.
Yeah, from the city and county and Cal Fire Resources and the Madera Mariposa Unit, we had six strike teams of engines. There are 16 people on each strike team. We had those up there. The city specifically, we had our Type 6 engine out of the unit for about 30 days, and city firefighters, some of them were on duty up to 54 days straight. So, it was a large commitment from our city firefighters. The sheriff, Tyson Pogue, through their Office of Emergency Services, they had pretty much every law enforcement agency from Mersegg County, Bakersfield, they had, they had them up on the fire assisting with evacuations and road closures.
Thank you, gentlemen, for the update. We really appreciate that. And Tim, please, if you can send our deepest appreciation from the city of Madera to all the men and women and all the firefighters who are helping put out this just tremendous and incredible blaze right here in our backyard. We know they're working long days, very little rest, and it's taking their toll. So, on behalf of the city of Madera, please extend our appreciation and thanks to all of them.
Yep, I'll certainly do that. Thank you.
You. Thank you, chief. Moving on to Item B1, this is the First Amendment to the City Clerk at Will Employment Agreement, extending the term of the agreement by three years and approving the step increase. Ms. Montoy, if you would, please.
Good evening, mayor and council. Under this item, the city council will consider whether to extend the at-will employment agreement of the city clerk by three years and also grant an increase in salary. The council has conducted a performance evaluation of the city clerk, and the council has engaged in negotiations with the city clerk, and I was asked by an ad hoc committee to bring forward this resolution and the agreement, and I will now turn it over to the mayor to publicly announce, under the Brown Act, what is required to be announced concerning the item before you, and then to deliberate.
Thank you so much, Ms. Montoy. For pursuant to Government Code Subsection 54953(c)(3), prior to taking action on this item, the council must publicly announce a summary of the action being considered. If approved, the proposed am- If approved, the proposed amendment to the city clerk's employment agreement will modify the existing agreement as follows. The agreement will be extended by three years to August 26, 2025. And effective on her merit anniversary date of August 26, 2020, city clerk's salary will be increased one merit step due to satisfactory performance to step B of the city of Madera's salary schedule. This is range 419, which is $72,489.30 per year payable in installments at the same time as the majority of the employer, excuse me, of the employers' employees. I will ask if there's any further discussion or question amongst my colleagues. Yes, ultimate Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Madeline. I'd like to remind the the council that a little over two years ago, the council came to a collective consensus to streamline the way we do business with respect to contracts. We hired a consultant to overlook at the city's contracts and compensation packages. In that study, we came to the conclusion that contracts should not extend three years. And especially for any executive management positions. You recall during that time, the public's concerns were the lack of transparency and lack of consistency. Terms of the contracts was amongst the top concerns. I believe we're slowly deviating from that hard work and we're slowly reverting back to a slippery slope. I want to ask that this council reconsider the extension of contracts that go beyond three years and and keep the consistency aligned to the recommendations provided by the consultant. This is in no way directed to any employee and furthermore to the city clerk, but rather keeping consistency throughout the organization. We have annual evaluations performed to the executive positions, and I feel that we can always revisit that extension when the time is appropriate. That being said, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to have to deny the agreement presented before us.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. Other comments from council? Appreciate I appreciate those comments. And as it pertains to management, I would agree. As for an at-will employee that has a different set of circumstance where they are exactly that, they are an at-will employee at the will of the council, the city clerk's position and the city manager's position are exactly that. Whether it's a one-year contract or a three-year contract, they are always at the will of the council. And so at any time, we can revisit that particular contract. That's my opinion, and and I have no issue moving forward with this particular contract. Yes, Councilman Rodriguez.
Yeah, and of course, that is your will. I just find that it's the flexibility of the organization to make any decisions. And I think it's always important to consider that. So that was my point.
Yeah, quite well taken. I appreciate that. Any other comments from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Holly.
Yes, I I concur with what you said. Counselor does have the opportunity to always bring back any at-will employee at any given year. So whether we make it one year, two years, or three years, it doesn't change what counsel can do. So I concur with leaving it at three years and leave it at the hands of the council if there needs to be any changes prior to that. I know they made these statements a couple of years ago to get rid of any one year, two years, or however they chose to do it. But what we fail to realize over these last eight years that I've been on council that we always have the right to change things and to add and to delete. So to our employees, to make them aware of the presence that they give us, the work that they confine for us, and the duties that they do pertaining to our city reflects on how counsel chooses things regardless of what happened in the past. So I concur with your decision to keep it at a three-year with the step B as it is presented, and that's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. Any other comments? I will ask our city clerk if we received any public comment via email.
None received, Mayor.
Thank you, Alicia, and I don't see any attendees wishing to speak. So with that, I'll call for action from council.
I so much approve D1 as presented.
Second.
Been moved by Councilwoman Gallegos and
Give it to Steve.
It was and and seconded by Councilman Montes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
For the record, if we can have a roll call vote, please, Alicia.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
No.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Madeline?
Yes.
Final vote is 6-1. Motion passes.
Thank you very much for that. Thank you, everybody, for your comments who commented. And also a thank you to the ad hoc committee, which was Councilwoman Gallegos and Councilman Robinson. Thank you very much for your efforts. Moving on to item B2, this is amendment number one and number two to agreement with GHD Inc. for professional engineering services relating to the Lake Street, Fourth Street, and Central Avenue intersection and the funding amendment to the CIP budget. I believe Mr. Bell will be giving this presentation.
Yes, I will. Good evening, everybody. I have a quick presentation. If I can share my screen here. Okay, this is for the Lake, Fourth, Central intersection improvements. Two council actions are included with this item, which is one, to amend the project budget, and two, to approve two various, two different amendment, contract amendments. The first contract amendment is for the plan specifications and estimate. This will be the design of the traffic signal and the improvements. That will develop, it will develop the plans, specifications, and estimates ready for bidding. It will identify right away necessary to build the improvements. And the consultant will provide support during the bidding and construction phases. The consultant fee phase for this, the consultant fee for this phase is $89,940, and that includes $8,000 for extra services should something unexpected come up. To refresh your memory, we did talk about this in February earlier this year, and this was what the the council decided that a traffic signal at this intersection. So this is kind of just a refresher of the design. Amendment two is for environmental studies. Right after it was decided to move forward with the traffic signal, we began our environmental review. And because this project is partially funded with federal funds, that requires a NEPA review. Caltrans reviews these NEPA reviews and documents. And after their review, they have required additional studies. These studies were not expected. These studies include visual impact assessment, a historic resources evaluation report, and historic property survey report. The consultant fee for these studies is $43,860. And it requires an amendment to our existing contract. The consultant already had environmental work within the contract, but these these studies exceeded what was originally agreed upon. A budget amendment is necessary to amend the budget to fund these amendments. And again, it's 89,944 amendment number one, 29,000 for amendment number two. There are some savings or there are some funds in our project already. That's why there's a difference in the numbers there for a total of $119,319. And staff recommends that you adopt the resolution approving the amendment for funding amendment and adopt the resolution approving the contract amendments for number one and two. And I'll open it up for any questions.
Great, Mr. Bell. Thank you very much for that. And that that tends to happen sometimes, especially when we're dealing with with Caltrans or environmentals, sequel, things like that. There's always a curve ball. And I'm certainly not surprised in this particular area of town that there are some historical issues that may come up.
Right.
Any questions from council on this particular item or from Mr. Bell? And you said that there's some funds there. I just want to be sure. There's it is, it's 43,000 and change just for the consultant to have to do the work that that Caltrans asking for. Are you saying that there there were some additional funding? What I'm really getting at, Mr. Bell, and maybe Keith, you can help. We're not pulling the this funding from any other project, are we?
No, no, we're not. There's there was 14,000, almost $14,500 on the existing contract with this consultant. So I'm utilizing those funds plus the extra $29,000. So, yeah.
We didn't use the original.
Already in the contract.
Right. We didn't use the original amount for the consultant. We didn't use all that. We had some.
That's correct, yes.
Great. Thank you very much. I'll ask our city clerk if there has been any public comment via email on this particular item.
None received, Mayor.
Thank you, Alicia. If there's no further discussion or comment, I'll call for action on item B2.
It's been moved to approve as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Montes and seconded by Councilman Robinson to approve item B2. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That and television approved unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. I appreciate it. Moving on to item B3, this is the contract for the construction of the 2019-2020-20 SB1 or RMRA Seals and Overlays, the city project number R77, to improve approximately two miles of roadway. I believe Mr. Aldama will be joining us this evening for this report. Victor, are you with us?
Yes.
Great. And as a reminder, for those that are not speaking, to mute their microphones or possibly mute or rid yourselves of any background noise, please. Thank you.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and members of the public. My name is Victor Aldama. I'm here tonight presenting another contract award for the SB1 Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account, also known as RMRA, 2019-2020 Seals and Overlay Project. So a brief history about the project. The project was advertised on August 15th of this year and opened bids on September 15th of this year. There were five contractors that submitted a proposal. Abbotson Construction Inc. submitted the lowest responsive and responsible bid. The project will be funded approximately with $899,000 of RMRA funds and $91,000 of Measur T funds. The total anticipated construction cost is roughly around $991,000. The current status of the project is, of course, a work contract for the construction phase during tonight's meeting. If council approves tonight's meeting for the award of contract, the anticipated completion is roughly around January 2021. So here is a location map of the improvements to be made on different road segments. You can see Yosemite Avenue represents a good chunk of it from Q Street all the way down to I Street. Right on the bottom right corner, along Route 28 and a quarter from Beacon Avenue all the way down to the city limits. And there's also several segments along those your streets that will be improved as well. So my presentation is very quick. In conclusion, staff does recommend that the city council award Abbotson Construction Inc. in the amount of $861,323. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Aldama, and we can certainly appreciate quick. Any questions of Victor from council? I'll ask our city clerk if we've received any written communication via email.
None received, Mayor.
Thank you very much. With that, I will close any public comment and bring it back to council for action on item B3.
I move to approve D3 as presented.
Second.
Been moved by Councilwoman Gallegos and seconded by Councilman Montes to approve item B3. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Aldama. We appreciate it. Moving on to item D4, this identification of projects for the F-TIP or the, excuse me, the Federal Transportation Funding under the cycle 10, Call for Projects for the Highway Safety Improvement, also known as the H-SIP. There's so many acronyms when it comes to transportation. It's too many to remember. Anyway, Mr. Bell, thank you again for joining us this evening.
Yeah, good evening again. Yes, this is, I'll share my screen again here. Okay, this is for the Cycle 10 Highway and Safety Improvement Program, also known as H-SIP. Call for Projects was issued on May 4th and applications are due on October 19th. The Engineering Engineering Department recommends two applications be submitted to Caltrans. One is the Granada Industrial Pedestrian Crossing, and the second is Yosemite L Street to N Street Pedestrian Improvements. And I'll talk about each of those briefly here after the grant criteria. The purpose of the H-SIP is to achieve a significant reduction in traffic fatalities and serious injuries on all public roads. The goal of this program is to select projects that can be designed and constructed expeditiously. Projects that require significant right-of-way or environmental review are generally not selected for this program. They want projects that can be delivered quickly. Okay, the Granada Industrial Pedestrian Crossing, Granada right now is striped as a three-lane collector and the crossing. This will be just south of, or just north of industrial connecting to the Town and Country Park. And we will include a high-visibility crosswalk, a median island in the center of the road, pedestrian activated, rapid flashing beacons, and a concrete path that continues on to to the park. I have kind of a kind of a general layout of this. We're still working on the design and some of the layouts, but this is the general idea of what we're looking at. Where this is industrial here and Granada, obviously, and then we'll be making some improvements for a crossing here. Second project is Yosemite L Street to N Street. Yosemite is a four-lane arterial, and students from Madera High and Thomas Jefferson Middle School both cross Yosemite Avenue to and from school. We're looking at three locations to do some improvements at L Street, M Street, and N Street. And these will include some high-visibility crosswalks, some bull belts at the intersections that will reduce the path of travel in Yosemite, and some pedestrian activated, rapid flashing beacons. And I do have a general layout of this as well. Looks like a little bit's cut off, but you get the idea, the kind of mirrored, all three of these will have kind of bull belt some at the intersections. High-visibility crosswalks, crossing Yosemite, flashing beacons, pedestrian activated. So all three intersections will have this kind of layout. As I mentioned, project applications are due on October 19th. Funding is anticipated to be available on January 1st. And following FHW procedures and after project design and environmental clearance, we should be able to ready to advertise these projects at early 2022. And that concludes my presentation and open up for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Those are great projects. Councilwoman Gallegos and then Councilman Rodriguez.
I would just like to thank staff for working on this. It's something that I've I've really been an advocate for because the students are always crossing Yosemite. And during the morning, people are trying to rush to get to work. We've had several students get gotten hit by cars and even their cars being hit by other cars. So this is a long time coming. I'm just sad I have to wait till 2022 to tell people, woo, here, it's it's here. But I know it's a process, and we've been waiting for it. So thank you for putting, pushing this forward. I appreciate it, and so does the community.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Madeline. So I too wanted to thank staff. I would I would have liked to seen that that pedestrian crossing on in on Granada a lot sooner. Obviously, the mayor and I have been part of some neighborhood watch meetings out in that area, and they've expressed concern of safety. And since it is a very highly trafficked area, I think the sooner the better. Now, in looking at the staff report, it seems like Now, in looking at the staff report, it seems like the, uh, H S I P funds are eligible to work on any public road, bicycle, pedestrian pathway or trail that improves safety for its users. The question that I have, uh, is if we can extend, uh, some of those monies to go into the, the, the trails that are in that park as well. Uh, they're, they're very, uh, deteriorated trails. I'm not sure if that's something that you can utilize with that, but certainly bike trails and, 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 uh, I'm sorry, bike paths and trails would certainly fit that description. I don't know if that's a, an answer that you can give me with, within those, uh, um, highway safety improvement funds. So I thought I'd ask, and you're saying that this could be realized in twenty twenty-two? Is this when we're looking at this happening?
Yes, with the current, uh, F H W A schedule, yes. And as far as doing any improvements within the park, uh, this grant is really focused on safety, safety issues. Um, so if there's safety issues within the park, uh, we can, we can look at those. But if it's a maintenance situation, this grant is not really for, built for maintenance. There are other programs that do maintenance. So I don't know what the exact problem is, but, uh, there is, there's a separation there.
Well, I, yeah, certainly. I'd like to look into that to see if that qualifies, um, maybe, you know, if, if those funds are, are, uh, allowed to be used in there, I certainly would like for staff to look into that because that, that is one part that certainly needs a lot of, uh, upgrades and, and uplift there, especially within its trails. Um, but again, I think the pedestrian crossing is very, uh, is of importance to that community there. And the sooner we can get that in, the better.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holly.
Yes, I, I know this, like to throw this in there while they talk about safety, uh, on Avenue twenty-eight and thirteen. They, we need to address that in the near future, but accidents that are happening in that location. So I'd like to see staff bring that back at a later date.
Yeah, I think, uh, well, well, we're on item D four right now. I think during council reports, there might be a, a couple of other intersections that we can talk about. Um, but yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Well, we'll bring it up again during council reports and, uh, make sure staff knows about it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, and I, I, I want to piggyback off of, of what we just said by Councilwoman Gallegos and Councilman Rodriguez. As we, as we do our C I P, uh, discussions, which we had this summer, um, and some items are on the list for one year and two years talking about and letting the community know what we've, what we've done, what we're working on and what we have planned to do. Um, and, and so I agree with you, Councilwoman. It, it, two years is a long time coming and the wheels of government move slow. And a lot of times, uh, when you're self-employed, Councilman Rodriguez, you know this, if we want something done, it can happen tomorrow. Um, it's not quite that easy, but when we're talking about millions of dollars um, and, and, and intersections and street lights and bulbouts and widening of roads or even improvement of roads, uh, sometimes it's years down the road. So I think it's just so vital when we talk about C I P that we loop in the community and let them know kind of what's on our menu, kind of what we're thinking about, uh, what's in the near future and what may be three or four years down the road. But again, to Councilman's, uh, point, um, that intersection was, was really the, uh, the, the neighborhood watching the community reaching out to the councilman and myself and saying, there's a safety issue. There's hundreds and hundreds of homes here and we have to cross a very dangerous street just to get to our local park. Um, and so we, we tried our best to let them know kind of how the wheels turn. Um, and they're going to be very excited to know that this is at least on, on the fast track to get done. So again, to tell that story, thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, that, uh, when I say that, I'm sorry, uh, uh, Arnoldo Rodriguez, our city manager, um, to make sure the community knows, um, uh, what's on the forefront, what we plan on, on doing and a lot of times how long it's going to take to be done. And I would dare to say also I would include the price tag as well because a lot of these projects are, are not cheap. Uh, Councilman Rodriguez, you had something to add?
Thank you, Merma Dilling. So back to that crosswalk there, um, because of the safety, is there something that we can do temporarily? Um, something that we can add just so that pedestrians feel safe when they're crossing, uh, going over to the park? I know that this project's out maybe, uh, two years or a year and a half. But meanwhile, is there something that we can add to, to, um, satisfy that request with respect to safety?
Randy, would you like, we, we, we've discussed a couple of options in terms of, uh, attempting an acceleration on that. And we can, we can go ahead and, uh, talk about those a little bit now. Randy, did you want to go ahead and present that?
Randy, you're on mute.
I'm muted, sorry. Um, we, we have, we have some ideas to accelerate, accelerate some things. We can, one, instead of waiting for the funds to be in place for the design, we can start the design soon in-house uh, using our own funds and only use construction funds for the grant funds for the construction phase that will accelerate the project a little bit. Another thing we can go out there and, and put a crosswalk out there at the intersection of industrial, um, and some, some, some signage to alert drivers of, of that. There's some hesitation with that, but I, I think there's, there's, is, that's something we can, we can look into.
Yeah, I, and I'll, I'll expand a little bit on this. I, I think Randy's thoughts on, on trying to move the, the design forward using in-house forces and, and, and using non-grant dollars is probably uh, the most, um, well, it's not the id- it's not the most ideal way to go, but it does, it does accelerate the completion of the project. If we, if we attempt to go ahead and put stripes down on the road, uh, we feel that we can probably do that, but we get about, um, statistically, we'll probably get about the same as what it is without the crosswalks. Because with, with three-lane roadways, crosswalks or no crosswalks, statistically, I can probably show you that it's about the same in terms of safety. It does give, it does give pedestrians a, a sense of safety, but not necessarily uh, a, a, a full. It, it doesn't necessarily really do it. In fact, if we were to move forward with something where we put stripes down, we would be uh, potentially using our public works crews to install some of the improvements. Our, our crews do have the, uh, the abilities and the skills to do some of this stuff. We would be, uh, cutting in a crosswalk at, at lea- at least one location depending upon where we ultimately decided to place it. And then constructing additional sidewalk to try to, on, on the east side of the street to, in an attempt to take pedestrians, specifically wheelchairs to a, uh, to a safer pla- to a place where they can access to the, the park. Uh, doing, doing the design in-house relatively inexpensive for us. You know, we haven't put a number on it, but, uh, doing the construction in-house, there's a cost, but it's not, it's not quite the same as, uh, uh, doing some of the construction in-house. There's a cost, but it's not quite the same as, as hiring a contractor to do all of it. But we, you know, at, at council's direction, we're, we're, we're willing to pursue, uh, one or both of those alternatives.
I, I agree with the councilman. I think whatever we can do to expedite, uh, and, and, and I always appreciate your view, Keith, on, on safety. We always want to keep in mind, uh, what's the safest. Uh, but especially now during COVID and, and people are dying to get out of the house and somewhere to go and, and the Town and Country Park can certainly uh, fulfill that, I would agree. And I think by, uh, Mr. Foss's facial, uh, expressions, I think he said they can have it done in about two hours. Done deal.
I, I, I think, I think he might've said an hour on the phone with Randy earlier. Is that right, Randy?
Don't give public works a, 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 a challenge. If engineering gives public works a challenge, it, it'll be done. Councilman Rodriguez, you had something to add?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to say, uh, to staff, you know, if you look at Granada, uh, especially on Howard, you know, the, the, the crossings that you've installed, they're actually something that's very appreciative. Uh, I think Shnor also the same. You get a lot of people parking there when the little leagues on. But on the west side of Granada, obviously you have a, a very expanding community out there that also needs to, to cross over that, uh, that three-lane, uh, road. So it would certainly help to bring something there, especially because it's a very trafficked area. So, um, I want to say thank you. And, and I would hope to hear from you guys soon. I'm not sure if you need direction from council, what have you, but I'm sure you bring this back to us.
And whatever we can move in-house to expedite, uh, this project i- i- quicker, sooner rather than later, I would be in favor of.
Well, if that needs to be in a form of a motion, uh, Hilda, then I can certainly do that. If not, then I can make the modification with the, uh, adoption of the, of the, uh, item before us.
Yes, it would be important for you to articulate, uh, what it is that, uh, you'd like, uh, the council to approve in addition to the, to the resolution that's before you.
So I, I'd move, Mr. Mayor, that we move on item D four with the, uh, modification there to expedite the Granada Drive and Industrial Avenue, uh, crosswalk.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Before I, before we act on that, I, I want to, uh, be sure there's no other, uh, questions or further comment on this particular item. And then I want to ask our city clerk if we've received any, uh, comments via email on this item.
None received, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Alicia. With that, it's been moved by Councilman Rodriguez with, uh, an addition to, uh, expedite using in-house staff for some of these items, and it's been seconded by Councilman Montes. All of that particular project, we look forward to seeing that move forward. Mr. Sanchez.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. We do have some information to share about retail sales taxes related to the ending of the year as of June thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty. This pertains to the second quarter of twenty twenty. Uh, some, uh, useful information that I, I think you'll, you'll enjoy. Uh, with that, uh, we promised that we would have the information as soon as we could, and that's what we, we've done. Uh, and I'd like to share my screen. So I do have some good, uh, news in, for the city of Madera, but also some, uh, challenging news as well for the local businesses. So it's been a, it's a mixed, uh, report and hopefully you'll, you'll find it useful. So the outline for this, uh, presentation is I'll provide some historical retail taxes, some context. I will also provide some insight on online sales tax and county pool and some information related to the Wayfair and, uh, what's been the results for the city on, on the sales taxes on that end. I also will present some, uh, sales per capita. We'll do some year-over-year comparisons by ma- by major business group. And we'll also provide some information on measure K results. So on the historical retail sales tax, um, we can see, uh, we'll provide some information year on different years. And you can see that the green chart represents the budget and the blue bar represents the actual results for the fiscal year sixteen seventeen. And as you can see, we can follow the next year, you can see, uh, half a million dollar increase in the sales taxes. Uh, and then we can see on fiscal year eighteen nineteen. And to the surprise, uh, uh, the latest results, we see a, an increase of, uh, sales taxes of over nine hundred thousand dollars from the budget or, uh, close to eleven percent. Now, there's a lot of information that goes behind this, this increase. The consultant projected actually the numbers to be below the eight point four million below the budget. And there's some really good explanations that I'll go in detail as to what happened and why that is the case. So we saw during COVID, the unemployment was high, and I'll provide some details on that. We saw the economic downturn. And, uh, we can see what, well, what, what's, what, what took place here. Uh, one of the big reasons is the online retail sales saw a significant increase of over four hundred thousand dollars on the, um, online sales. And that, uh, has a direct benefit because of the increased uh, sales on online sales attributed to, to the county and to the city. But also it has to do with the Wayfair case where, uh, it used to be that, uh, uh, you have to have a, a physical building in order to collect taxes, but now it's at the point of delivery that, uh, uh, the Supreme Court went and, uh, the state of California expanded on that. And so it's benefiting the communities in the state of California, and we can see that, uh, in, in this case. So that was a significant, uh, improvement because of online sales. We also, uh, were expecting a million dollars or more on tax deferments. What we found out is the majority of the businesses decided to pay on time instead of waiting for a full year for payment on taxes. So that was another reason. Uh, another reason is that, uh, the COVID impact, uh, it's, um, it, it had a, a less severe impact on an agriculture economy compared to the rest of the state where there's tourism and other, uh, activities. So I'll go into more detail as well. So, uh, this is the online sales, uh, increases in income taxes. And you can see on different years, uh, we see a, an increase of three hundred thousand dollars between the fiscal year eighteen to nineteen. Uh, that is a twenty-four percent increase. Then we also see another increase from fiscal year nineteen to, uh, fiscal year twenty, which is, uh, what we're closing. And that is a twenty-six percent increase. If you notice, we're surpassed the two million dollar collected from online pool sales. And that makes it now the biggest category, uh, that we, that we see at this point, um, compared to other categories. And I'll show some more detail as well. Continue to do that, and I will provide some in, some insight as well. This is a very useful chart because if you can tell the gray, um, line on the top represents the state of California sales per capita. The orange bars represents the city of Madera, uh, within the city limits, sales per capita. And then this blue one represents the county. What I found to be very interesting is that, uh, at the peak, we had over four thousand dollars of, on average, per person, there was, uh, uh, sales of over four thousand dollars per person uh, before COVID. But look at the, the impact on COVID at the state of Califor- California level. Uh, there is over twelve hundred dollars decrease and that represents twenty-nine percent drop, uh, during the COVID period. And that is, uh, you can tell right away that, that's a big hit. You can see that the community within the city limits is almost close to the state and, and, and historically during downturns, that's never been the case. It's, uh, you know, we always go down. If there's a down, we also, the community also goes down, but that was not the case here. It was the state. And again, the community overall, it was not as, as impactful in large, in large part because of the internet sales, but also because of the ag economy. Now, these are the, uh, uh, sales tax by major business groups and, and we can see what has been the impact at a local level here at Madera. And this is a year-over-year change. What we're doing is we're comparing the previous year to the nineteen twenty year. And as we can see on autos and transportation, we saw an increase. We, the consultants projected a, a, a fifty-five percent drop, and that was not the case. We actually saw a, an increase. However, I'm going to show you some more details. In other parts of the state, it did go down in a significant way. So we can see on auto's transportations, we can see it on, uh, building and constructions, uh, an increase. Uh, however, on business and industry, we see a, a big drop, uh, and, and those are the businesses that, um, that have a, um, that are suffering in the community right here, uh, in, in a significant way. So this represents two hundred thousand dollars or a thirteen percent drop. On the food, food and drugs, almost no change. On the fuel, again, a, a drop of about seven percent, a hundred thousand dollars. On the fuel, again, a drop of about 7%, $100,000 drop. So you can see there was a hit there. On the, on the general consumer goods, also a significant drop over $100,000 or slightly above 7% as well. Restaurants and hotels relatively the same, but as, as you know, there's a lot of small restaurants that are suffering at this point. And this is where we see the internet sales where it surpasses all the other categories now with over $2 million. But also we see the, the significant increase that we, the city has enjoyed. It's a blessing for the city. But again, other sections have suffer in a significant way.
Mr. Sanchez.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Medell, yeah, thank you for leaving that up there. A couple of things while we're on the screen. The first one where it says autos and transportation, I just kind of want to point out that you had mentioned being an ag-based community or the Central Valley being ag-based. So when it's autos and transportation, that means in the ag industry, it could be tractors or, or equipment and things like that. That would be under this category. Is that correct?
That would be, that would be correct. Yes, that would be.
It's not, it's not just vehicles, but again, I think, I think we have a couple of two or three farm equipment or tractor companies that do, that do very well. And then could you kind of for the community's sake, because there was a time where online sales, we received really nothing from that, and now we are receiving some tax increment, if you will, or retail tax for that online sales. Just for the community's point of view, can you now kind of maybe explain that a little bit?
Yes, so you know, from, I believe the case from 1992, a long time ago, it was against, it was working against us, but in 2018, the Supreme Court took the case and they reversed it where the point of delivery, we now see more benefits. Now, all, the decision takes time to, to see the dollars come back to the community. It takes a long time. And it wasn't until 2019, in April 1st of 2019, that the state of California put farther measures. And at the, until that point, we can begin to see the real increases, not to mention the, the COVID when during COVID, there was an increase in sales that people order online more as well when they stay at home. But that was all direct impact from, from the state making aggressive changes. That was on top of the Wayfair case, and but it takes time to to see those benefits.
Fortunately, there are some benefits. Of course, we would certainly love to have the retail store here in the city of Madera, but at the least we are seeing some of that tax revenue from online sales.
Yes, and the way, the way it works is the state distributes the funds and then it gets allocated to the county and it's based on population. So, so we do see the, some of those benefits here.
Great. Councilman Rodriguez has a question.
Thank you, Mayor Medell. So just on that same point, I have two questions. On that same point, I, you see the difference of about $400,000. And then you can start seeing where the other areas are actually hurting. But one of the things that I didn't, I didn't hear is the half-cent sales tax that's applied with, with the retail sales. Do those internet sales add that half-cent sales tax? Is that something that we get back? Because although we might be looking good, obviously by not purchasing local, I don't know if that has an impact in the amount of money we regenerate for measure K.
Mr. That is, that is an excellent question. I do not have an answer for that. I would have to investigate that specific question, if it impacts the measure K, are they paying measure K? I don't have an answer for that, but I will investigate that.
I, my first thought is that they don't because they're not buying local, right? But I mean, that, that would be something interesting to know because although the trend shows that you know, yes, internet sales are going up, and I don't know more so now with COVID, but previous years, I think you had shown that internet sales were already creeping up somewhat. And and obviously COVID certainly impacted the way they increased this time around. But moving forward, if this is kind of where the community is going, is shopping online, is that also impacting us in a, in a form of generating revenue from measure K? Because at the end of the day, you know, yes, it's good that the city's staying whole. But at the same time, there's other dips that we're taking as far as retail sales and the ability to sustain measure K funding.
You know, I, once we see the numbers in measure K, I think you will see a confirmation that most likely we're not benefiting, the measure case not benefiting from online sales, and the numbers will show. So, but I, but we'll still confirm that. I'll investigate that just to make sure.
Thank you, Ron.
Yeah, excellent question, Mr. Councilman. Thank you. Mr. Sanchez, please continue.
So this is a little bit more detail on, on, on the same level of information that I just provided on the, on the previous slide. But it, it, it shows, this will show us the impact on the different communities, but also compared to the state and to the county. So if you look at here at the city of Madera, we're comparing the quarter during COVID. That is the second quarter of 2020 between April to June of 2020, comparing to the same period the previous year. And you can see the change in percentage, and you can see the business category. So for example, on autos, we see an increase of 11% on building constructions, business and industry, food and drugs, and so on. But we also see on, on fuel, you can see on the lot, on the, on that quarter, the impact on the fuel service stations. And when, then we can see the consumer goods and restaurants. At the same token, if we compare, for example, on the restaurants, at a 12% drop, look at the state level, 45% drop. And we, it's, it's sad to see this, the level of impact. And then you can see this 11% drop with a 38% drop at a state level. If you look at the autos, yeah, we saw an increase. But the consultants were right on thinking the significant drop on auto sales, and you can, the numbers show across the state. Overall, this is excluding the online sales. We see a drop of 3.4% and a 24% drop at the state level with a close to 10% drop at the county level. This gives also some context with unemployment. You can see historical context of unemployment within the Madera area, and you can see some of how we enjoyed and at the height of COVID, very high unemployment. But things are looking up. There's improvements at this point. Things are getting better, as you can see. And so the question is, how does this compare to the rest of the state? And and so hopefully the next slide attempts to do that, so we can see the 10% of Madera. The highest unemployment is at Imperial Valley, close to 23% unemployment. And the, and the lowest is Lassen County at 6.7%. We're still below the state average and also way below compared to the Los Angeles area. Measure K taxes, we can see in the budget and the actual for this 1718. Then we can see the 1819 budget to actual. And so for the numbers for this year, again, these are subject to audit review and potentially some adjustments that on some items that are, that are pending. However, this is kind of how we see going forward on this, and the evidence shows to Mr. Rodriguez's point that most likely we're measure K online sales is not giving any benefits to measure K dollars, and you can kind of see this here. With that, I'm open for questions for discussion, and that's my presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sanchez. Honestly, I think months ago, I, I would not have been surprised if it would have been down upwards of 15, 20%. So at the, at the top of the meeting where we talked about our small businesses really hurting, and they are, these, these numbers are a little comforting in some of the areas, knowing that we're not as, we're not as bad as some. We still need to recover, and we still need to get back on our feet as far as small businesses are concerned and get people back to work. 10% unemployment is better than most, but that's not where we want to be. But, but those are some eye-opening numbers, and I think it's, gives us a little take a little comfort in that, that we're not hit as bad as some counties and some other cities. Any questions of Mr. Sanchez from council? Right, Mr. Sanchez, thank you very much for that, for that informational update. We look forward to future updates. We've done item E2, so we'll move on to item E3. This is discussion on status and action taken on measures to mitigate the impacts of COVID-19. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council are known to Rodriguez, the city manager. I'm going to share my screen. The item before you is an informational item with some of the measures that the city's taken to help mitigate some of the impacts of COVID-19. I know in previous meetings, we've talked specifically about some of the measures we've taken to protect a lot of our city employees and the community. This item this evening is specifically about the program that we've discussed at the last meeting. We, we received notification from CalO. We asked that we are eligible to receive PPE, which we can distribute to, to local businesses for free. We have partnered with Madera County, EDC, and a litany of other local agencies and organizations to try to get this out to local businesses. The city of Chauchilla and Eastern Madera County did receive their, their supplies a bit sooner than the city of Madera, so they have commenced distributing it. And in, in the city of Chauchilla, the, the supplies are, are, are being stored at, at the Chauchilla Police Department. And in Eastern Madera County, they are at Oakhurst, and the name escapes me. However, we collectively designed one website where we are asking businesses to sign up. It's, the user interface is, is relatively easy. We are not asking a tremendous amount of information, or rather, the goal is to make sure that we're providing free PPE for local businesses to supply their, their employees. So, so with that being said, the program does provide free, free face masks, hand sanitizer and face shields. And again, the PPE is intended for employees for up to 30 days. So this is a free 30-day supply of hand sanitizer, face masks, and also face shields for businesses to pick up to hand to their employees. And again, a short time ago, I said that there were a lot of different agencies involved. These are some of the groups involved, the city of Madera, Chauchilla, the county, the Chamber of Commerce, the EDC, Madera County workforce, and also we are doing this in partnership with the fairgrounds. So the city of Madera recently received our shipment. We have 1,600 gallons of hand sanitizer. We have received 256,000 face masks, and we've also received 28,000 face shields. The goal is to get these out to local businesses as soon as possible. And again, this is free of charge. This is a photo of our fairgrounds. This is our storage unit that we have. And so sometimes it's helpful to provide some context to show that it's a lot of equipment, and it's a lot of face masks and 1,600 gallons of hand sanitizers is a whole lot. And so again, in Chauchilla, so I did earlier, I said in Eastern Madera County, it was in Oakhurst, it's over at the Oakhurst Elks Lodge. And in Chauchilla, it is at the police department. Both of those have begun the program, and they started a little bit before us because they received their shipments sooner than we did. Here in the city of Madera, we, we are going to begin prepping tomorrow. We, we are going to have, I believe, five city employees. We have some employees from Public Works and from the police department. They're going to be assisting them in that, and I believe there's also a park employee as well. And so we are going to be rotating over a couple of days. We'll be rotating some employees so we can assist in the distribution. We have been promoting the event. We, we are required to, to, to have businesses submit request forms, and the primary reason for that is we do have to report this information to the state of California, specifically CalO, we asked, and they in turn have to report it to the federal government, is my understanding. Our, our first distribution is going to begin October the 13th, and it's going to run for several days. And as of last Friday, we, we had roughly 170 businesses signed up. And so with that being said, that, that concludes my presentation, and, and just please know that we are going to be extremely aggressive in the next couple of days in trying to make sure that we're getting the word out to local businesses, because again, the goal is to get PPE in the hands of our local businesses to make sure that their employees are safe. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rodriguez. Any questions about report? That was a very compelling picture, Hatfield Hall at the fairgrounds. That normally has weddings and parties and upwards of 400, 500 people, and now it's filled with pallets of PPEs. Thank you very much for that. Moving on to council reports, this gives each council member an opportunity to speak about their boards or commissions or things going on in the community. So I'll ask Councilman Robinson for his report.
Nothing to report.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Gallegos.
Nothing to report.
Councilwoman Mayor Protem Garcia.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Holly.
Really don't have nothing to report, but I would just like to know if we can bring that item Avenue 13 and Road 28 from engineering about that intersection, getting somewhere to make that a four-way stop. There's been quite a few accidents in that area. Been getting a lot of calls of people trying to as well crossover. And it's getting real bad because of, due to the fact that Avenue, Elmwood Avenue is closed. They're coming off early on Avenue 12 and coming through that area.
Engineering will go ahead and start out with getting accident history on the intersection, and we will go ahead and have counts also taken and review traffic signal and stop sign warrants.
Okay.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Councilman. Appreciate it. Thank you, Keith, for that. Councilman Rodriguez.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, you know, thank everyone and also, you know, stay safe out there, but I also wanted to bring out the, the, the Westbury Bridge topic that has been brought several times. I know that that's something in our future that we anticipate to see. You know, with development extending out in the west and future Village D, not sure if those areas would impact this bridge, but we certainly have to start considering something there. So just, I, I'm not, not sure if this is already planned at some point in our future agenda, Mr. Ronaldo Rodriguez, but if, if in fact, if you can comment on that and say if this is something that we would be seeing hopefully in the future. You know, that's certainly a topic of discussion that needs to take place.
So the Westbury Bridge is going to be included as part of the Development Impact Feed Program or study. We have commenced that study. What we're doing is because the study is, it is a little bit stale. What we are going to do is we are going to take a look at the study one more time with the consultant, make sure that the figures are are reflective of, of, of current construction cost and land values. And we'll be bringing that before the council. Prior to bringing it for the council, though, we are going to establish a, a working group of local developers and property owners to make sure that we ground truth any of the data that we've included in the study.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Appreciate that. With that, those are my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Councilman. Mr. Sanchez, you have something to add?
My apologies. I, I just received a text message. It's not clear where it's coming from, but I believe it's coming from our consultant from HCL, wanted to clarify that we should be collecting sales taxes for measure K.
And you mean that on the internet sales, correct?
That is correct.
Great. Great. Thank him from us for, for, not only for that report, but for paying attention and watching our council meeting. Councilman Montes.
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I just kind of want to go reiterate. I, I'm sure I speak for all the council when I say that, that we really feel for our local businesses and our small businesses out of the backbone of our community, and if we can wave a magic wand here at, at City Uh, here at, at City Hall, we would do so. Um, and to get back to some normalcy, but I just wanna reiterate, the best thing to do is to stay safe. To wash your hands, to wear a mask, um, and to keep doing everything possible that we can to help one another. Just get these numbers down. Once the numbers go down, uh, things change and we can get back and open again. So. Um, thank you very much for that. I have nothing else to report. I will ask our attorney for a closed session announcement.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Your closed session, you have one item, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. Deciding whether to initiate litigation under government code section five four nine five six point nine D four, and we have one case to consider.
Great, Hilda. Thank you very much for that. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for joining us this evening. I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Garcia.
I'm, I'm sorry, uh, to interrupt, Mr. Mayor. Um. Uh, I got an email requesting that the city council do a, a clip. Do, do, was that gonna be done tonight or some other time of, of having us, uh. Ask the, the, uh, the folks in Madera County to get tested for COVID? Did anybody else get that?
We did, uh, I believe council got an email, uh, this afternoon, uh, that was sent to us that the. County was asking us as a whole to do something together about getting tested. Um, I talked to our city clerk earlier. She was going to try if we were all online prior to the meeting, which I don't believe we were. Um, so maybe that's something we can do after the meeting and, uh. If the council isn't supportive of that, I think they were looking, Alicia, for just kind of some small clip. They were gonna use this for, um. Uh, like, uh, uh, an advertisement or something.
Uh, a montage of other leaders throughout our community to get the, help get the word out.
So if council's okay, we'll stick to the agenda. We'll go into closed session once we adjourn after, uh, uh, we return from closed session and we adjourn. Then we could do a quick PSA. That be okay with everybody? Great. Thank you very much for that. Uh, again, uh, thank you, everybody for joining us. We will now adjourn to closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council met in closed session. All members of the City Council were present. The City Council determined to authorize staff and council to engage in discussions for a tolling agreement with the High Speed Rail Authority regarding litigation on the EIR. And then number two, the council by the same vote of five to two with Council Member Holly and Mayor Proten Garcia voting no on both, also determined to initiate litigation against High Speed Rail Authority. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Montoya. I appreciate that. Thank you, everybody, for joining us. And with that, I will adjourn this evening's meeting. Thank you and have a good day.